Good evening, everyone.
My name is Marcus Hanson. I'm the Chair of the Utilities and Environment Committee. I'd like to let and call this this session to order. Joining me are committee members Sean Murphy, Patrick Richardson, and Mary Westfall. Also in attendance is our council member Brian McCann. We have Mayor Mark Frye, Leslie Briening, Laura Smith, Joe Shaw, Chief Miller, and Bill Sanford. Purpose of tonight's meeting is administration, Mr. Shaw has proposed a rate increase on water and sewer. And we would like to allow him to present his proposal, which looks at a five-year term on water. And a three-year term, as well as a five-year term on sewer, if I'm stating that correctly.
Close, bounced up.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Shaw, if you'd like to go ahead and show us what you have here.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time. I'll have my back to you guys just for a second, but then I'll get. I want to show you a couple of exhibits that are not in your handouts. Just to kind of step you through, it's always a good measure when we get to talk about water and sewer rates. Just briefly discuss where we get our water from. We obviously get it from the city of Toledo. Up on the whiteboard, that's not in your packet, but what's in front of you is what's in our current contract with Toledo. When it comes to all of the different satellite communities that receive their water from Toledo. Obviously, the first couple of rows there are Toledo and Lucas County, but once you start with Sylvania and work your way down, you can see the rest of the satellite communities that get their water from Toledo. And what's interesting is, as we keep stepping forward from twenty-four to twenty-five, and then we get to twenty-six, that's the normalization period to try to get all of those satellite communities to pay the same for water. So, it hasn't been equal. It wasn't equal when the Regional Water Commission was established. But there was a term to get everybody paying the same, so that mommy wasn't paying any less than Sylvania was, that Monroe County was. So, in 2026, they'll accomplish that goal. So, as you can see from Sylvania on down, everybody who's a satellite customer will pay the same rate. Okay? And then as it steps forward, Toledo themselves will have rate increases equally the same on all of the customers. You'll notice, and don't pay so much attention to the numbers, because the units they use are different than we use. So, it's more just to kind of demonstrate the uniformity as we kind of march forward. But, you know, twenty-nine is a pretty big rate increase that Toledo's proposing. Without digging too deep into their stuff, they're proposing somewhere around a twelve percent rate increase for everybody. Most of the other ones are somewhere between two and four, but I thought it was good to show that. That's where we're kind of currently sitting. Down the road, we'll do rate structure analysis for another term with Toledo Regional Water Commission. I am the President of Toledo Water Commission, so I'll be actively involved in that process. But I thought it was good to at least show that as we're talking rates. The other thing that's important to show, which I didn't include you, and I'm not expecting you to read this, but the behind-the-scenes looks of what's on the expenditure side when it comes to water and sewer are obviously projects. What we do to keep our system up and running, to keep our system from not falling apart. So, behind the scenes, and some of the rates sheets that are in front of you tonight are a lot of this stuff that's right here. So, we've got all of these improvement projects on the water side, stepped out with a five-year plan for what we plan on doing. I won't go through all of those, but I will highlight that our tanks are up for painting, all of them. Those are usually, you know, somewhere between a four to a $600,000 effort to do per tank for the insides and outs. So, we need to make sure that those are properly allocated for in our rate structure to make sure we can pay for those. Those are in years twenty-eight and twenty-nine in our capital improvement plan. The other thing you'll notice on the water side, there is a lot of water main replacements. We're doing a very good job. If you recall, when we were, as a part of the Toledo Regional Water Commission, right before that, we did substantial rate increases to look for an alternate water source. Rather than adjust those rates anymore, we kind of froze those. But for the reserve that was built up for that, we put that into the system with capital improvement projects. And we've been doing a lot of great water line replacement projects in our system. We only have about two or three four-inch water mains left in our system, which is fantastic. US-23 is getting a brand-new crossing here probably in a month, which is a big expense. That's awesome. Bow Four was a four-inch for a very long stretch. We've gotten that done, cushioning we've gotten done. So, we were able to knock out a lot in our system with those reserves that we built up. But we're through that. You know, we've kind of made our way through those things. And now we need to make sure that for these other improvements that we've got scheduled in our system down the road, we properly have our rates set up for that. So, that's on the on the water side. The last one, I'll show you that you guys don't have a copy. We do the exact same thing on the sewer side. So, every project there that we have planned for the next five years is listed. I'll point out probably the two largest ones that we have coming up on our sanitary sewer system is related to our pumping stations. Every, every, I would say ninety-seven percent of all sewage that's in Sylvania gets pumped from either two stations. One is Monroe Street by Burger King, or the other one is Sylvania Avenue across from Camp Miaconda. Pretty much all of our sewage goes through those. Those are original pumping systems from the nineteen-seventies. Obviously, pump rehabs and, you know, keeping them up to date. They get pulled every couple of years, and we fully go through and make sure those pumps are working great. But those stations and all the infrastructure inside of them are original from the seventies. Those two stations are up for major overhauls. The Sylvania Avenue Station itself will be an expensive project. It's about $3 million to do that one in and of itself. But that's a complete station replacement. Monroe Street Pumping Station, that one won't be as expensive, although it is the most critical piece of infrastructure we have, because a lot of the shell and the building itself and the Thrywell that's below is in very good shape. But the pumps themselves are still seventy years old, and we're getting harder and harder to find replacement parts for them. So, those will be complete pump replacements. There's a lot of pipe gallery replacements that go with those. So, I wanted to point those out. These are things that we're looking for five years, you know, down the road to establish what's going to be in front of you tonight. So, that said, I'll go through what was in your packets. You had your memo that I released on Friday that showed what I'm recommending for water and sewer rate adjustments. Just as a quick refresher, our current rate for sanitary sewer is $5.56 per 1,000 gallons and $8.75 per 1,000 gallons for water. So, given the five-year plans that we're looking at and what we need to do to stay on top of things here, our office has put together a couple of different looks for you, and I'll start on the water side. That's the one that's got the blue ribbons that run through the sheet. So, those expenditures that I just kind of talked about there are embedded in the sheet. They just do a lot of work in behind the scenes. But in order for us to keep doing what we need to do with distribution system replacements, painting our tanks, those types of things, we're recommending a seventy, a seventy-cent rate increase for next year. And as you step through that sheet, you're looking at kind of the yellow bars that are on that sheet. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, pretty, I would say, consistent rate increases for the next five years to keep us on track to do those things. So, seventy cents is really what we're talking about tonight. Seventy cents is what's in the proposed 2026 budget. The rest of the numbers, as we kind of work our way out, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, are for you to see where we're headed and why we need to go where we need to do in order to accomplish those projects that are listed there. One thing I'll mention real quickly, two yellow bars at the bottom of your sheets. Those show a reserve balance as well as reserve minimum. So, our debt financial policy that we have tells us how much we need to have in the water account at any point in time. And that's based on twenty percent of expenditures. That's just what's written into our debt policy. So, the last line down there for twenty-six, 1.098 million, and then you kind of can work your way down. Those are the reserve minimums that we should be having in that account at all times according to our debt policy. The rate structures that are built into that on top show us continuing to spend down those reserves. So, if you know in twenty-six, we're still about 1.3 million over those reserves. But as we keep working our way out to twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, by the time that we get to thirty, we've kind of stepped right into what I would like to see, which is a half-million dollar over reserve minimum. That's just my personal take. That's what I feel comfortable with. That's if a big problem happens that I'm not foreseeing. I've got something in that reserve, half-a-million dollars over that reserve minimum. So, that's me. That won't be something you see in your debt policy, but as your service director, that's what I would feel comfortable with. By the time we get to thirty then, once we're in thirty, we should be able to keep that half-million-dollar cushion as we continue to march forward. So, that's the look on the water side. Maybe I'll take a quick pause and answer any questions anybody has on the water side.
Mr. Shaw, I know I've asked this before, but I just don't recall the answer. Can you give me any perspective if there's an average amount of water usage in a basic residential home or a range that people would be using? I'm just trying to think about how much that seventy cents might incrementally.
Sure. Three hundred gallons per person, per household, or that equates to roughly what Mr. Murphy and I were just talking about. That nine thousand gallons to 10,000 gallons per month. That's what a family of four, I have a family of four at home. I just read my bill before I came here to make sure it was right. My September bill was ninety-three hundred gallons. It fits pretty good for my family. I need to tell my freshman daughter not to take longer showers to get us under the minimum. But yeah, right around that, that mark.
Great, thank you.
And, Mr. Shaw, just to clarify, the minimum debt policy, which is twenty percent, that's basically two or three months' worth of excess cash relative to our monthly expenses.
That's right.
Similar to what the people that talk about, how much should you have in a rainy day fund for your own personal finances? That's, that's the logic behind that, correct?
Yep, that's exactly right. And, you know, the big driver that are two things, right? What we're spending in our system to improve the capital, making sure our water mains aren't breaking, making sure we're replacing them on schedule, painting our tanks. And then, too, what we're paying Toledo for our bulk water purchases for them. Those are the two drivers of what you see in front of you on the water side.
The pumping station, this is more just out of curiosity. I know this is five years down the road, or something to that matter. But when you say it has to be a complete replacement, is it a, like, a new station and then we reroute it once it's done? Is it you're going in and removing pump by pump and just kind of slowly?
Yes, Savina, Savina Avenue is interesting, because we're in design on it right now. Basically, the only thing that we're going to reuse is the wet well. So, just to keep it real simple, sewage comes in, comes into a small holding tank, so to speak. And then from that, it's pulled out from the pumps and then up, and then we force main it to where it needs to go. What we would do is build everything offline in a brand-new station. So, you're building everything. You got everything set to go. And then you're literally putting a penetration from the new station into the old wet well. And you just switch it around, and then boom, you fire it up, and you go. Yep, thank you.
So, Mr. Shaw, I just want to make sure I heard you right. You said four hundred to six hundred thousand just to repaint the interior?
Yeah, I can even tell you what we had in there. So, for, these are the exteriors and the interiors, right? So, we've got Burnham Tank, I have four hundred and twenty-seven thousand. That's a number that comes from our consultants. It does our tank work, their Dixon Engineering. Sometimes you'll see them show up on different things. They actually had a contract that was in this year's budget. But four hundred and twenty-seven thousand to do the necessary painting there. My other tank, Fossil Park, that's the one that's out west, two hundred and eighty-one thousand to paint that one. And then our ground-level tank, which is at Brent Road, is two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So. And then I guess, you know. And so, you know, real quick, those are on fifteen-year cycles. That's what's recommended. You make sure you're painting your tanks every fifteen years. We can all go to small communities that see rusted tanks all over the place. They are not painting their tanks every fifteen years. I can only imagine what the inside of those tanks look like. You go past ours, you barely see rust on them. So, fifteen years is our current cycle. And these years that they're allocated for, those are, those would be right at fifteen, sixteen years since the last time they were painted.
I guess outside, you know, you mentioned the seventy cents for 2026. I guess just doing, doing the math, from what I'm seeing, it's a seven to nine percent increase per year over the next five years.
All right. Any other questions on the water before I switch to sewer? All right. On the water, on the sewer side, you have two sheets in front of you. You have, I'm going to call it a brighter green bar and a darker green bar. The brighter green bar is listed as a five-year look, look ahead. And the three-year bar, or the darker green is your three-year bar looking ahead. So, again, let me step back before we go into what's being proposed here. The biggest thing that we're seeing so far on the sewer side is our plant debt service with Lucas County has gone up quite a bit. If you rewind our clock back to before COVID, 2017, we did really large diameter inspections of our sewers to see what our huge main, critical infrastructure looked like. We had a lot of Level fours. We had a lot, a lot of Level fives, which are not good, which means you've got, in our concrete pipes, we had some bars that were starting to show through there. So, we did Phases One, Two, and Three of large diameter lining on our, on our systems. Basically, that's McCord Road. That's Sylvania Avenue. That's, that's up along US-23. There's some really critical infrastructure that we hit through there to take care of those. We lined all those and did a great job. At the same time that we were doing those, our system is about the same age as Lucas County's system. They were doing the exact same thing. So, not only do they have, you know, things to take care of at the plant with their digesters and their holding tanks and their grit screens and everything else, they were also lining their sewer system from the plant, working their way up. If you're familiar where it's at, next to the river, they're almost all the way up to Monclova Road. But every year that they've done a lining project, so have, so have we with three phases. Now, they're continuing to go, because they have a lot more sewer to do. But all that debt is starting to show up on our end. So, in the last three or four years, our plant debt service has probably gone from three hundred to four hundred thousand a year. It's getting close to seven to eight hundred thousand a year. That's a huge increase on the sewer side with all of the work that they've been doing down at the plant. So, that's what we're looking to do here, is we got to do some pretty big catch-up on our plant debt service that we have at the county. Plus, like I said, we've got, you know, seventy-year-old infrastructure that we need to do ourselves with our two pump stations. So, what you're seeing here is more aggressive in terms of what we're asking for. But again, we've got to keep pace with what, what debt the county keeps throwing at us for the improvements that they're doing at the plant. Okay? So, what you have is your light-green sheet. What I wanted to do was, again, get that reserve minimum and reserve balance in check so that we had about a half-million dollars of cushion in there. You'll notice in twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, we are below what our current debt policy suggests that we should be. That's the last two lines on your sheet there. That's got to change. That's not comfortable for me as a sewer guy that's going to, you know, take a look at everything. We need to make sure that we've got the necessary reserve cushion that we need to, to make sure if a pump goes out, to make sure we have, you know, God forbid, a sewer, something issue go bad, we've got to have that in there. So, the light-green bar takes that over a five-year and gets us up to what our financial debt policy says that we should be, plus my $500,000 cushion, so that accomplishes it in a five-year period. And the dark-green one does that in a shorter term. That does it in a three-year period. But again, if you look at 2026, we're proposing the exact same rate increase in both of those years. So, whether we do this in five years or whether we do this in three years, not necessarily super applicable, but certainly so that you guys can see where we're going with this. Okay? So, again, both, both rate increases that we're proposing, a dollar eleven per 1,000 gallons increase in twenty-six, then what we do after that, how fast we want to get on the right side of our financial debt policy, that's the discussion to have, whether we want to do that over a five-year period or we want to do it over a three-year period. Yeah, I'll take a step back and more questions.
Mr. Shaw, same question. Like, how does the sewer work on a per-household basis and how you measure, you say a thousand gallons? Is it the same kind of measurement as the water, about the same amount?
Right. So, I mean, you're, what we do on the sewer side is you're on water meter readings. So, as soon as that point of water enters the house, you're taking that reading. And then you're, whatever it is, you're assuming that most of that comes out. Not all of it does, right? I mean, you've got.
Kind of using the same measurement.
Exactly, exact same measurement, right? Any other questions?
Is there, just from your perspective, is there an advantage to doing the three-year model? And I guess the second question, you know, is there an advantage to having both sewer and water over the same timeframe, which would be five years?
Yeah, for me, they're two independent utilities. I think they're, they're both start, the starting points are different. So, I think treating them the same is really difficult for me. The water is starting from a healthy account when we were working with Toledo Regional Water Commission. And we're trying to bring that kind of back down into a good stable spot where we can kind of march forward, whereas the sewer is starting below, and we need to play some catch-up. So, I think doing them both at the same time, you can do it that way. For me, as a service director, would I rather have that financial debt policy on the right side in three years? Absolutely. I would love to have that better looking than that. That's my recommendation. But I know that's tough, because I mean, you're looking at some, some numbers there that are all larger, you know, dollar eleven, dollar seventy-seven cents. And then we get back to kind of a better look once we get out into twenty-nine. But certainly more aggressive on the sewer side is what we're proposing. I don't know if I answered your question.
You did, yeah. Okay, thank you. I guess I do have another one. So, you know, the 2026 proposal is already included in our, in our budget, which is a separate item that we'll be discussing tonight. So, I guess what, what actions or what decisions are you hoping to see out of this meeting?
Well, I wanted to at least get the sewer stuff in front of you, because that's, that's obviously more concerning for me. I want to make sure that we're on the right side of that financial policy. I think it's important to get that in front of you. Regardless, the, the budget that you guys have already seen, that we've had our finance committee on, that you guys are going to have in front of you tonight, just to do your first reading on, those adjusted rates are included in that. So, if there was a change or we wanted to do something different, we would have to modify the budget to do that. But like I said, my goal is just to get the information in front of you, so you can see why we're asking for what we is, what we are. Transparency in this stuff is important. These are public utilities. You know, what, what revenue you bring in and what expenses are coming out is everything with how you operate these. So, just wanted to make sure you understood fully how, how we were establishing the rates.
I know, I mean, if you want 500,000 over minimum on each account, is that, just logistically, they separate or could be a million over between the two, and does it really matter?
Does, they're separate accounts, so they are, they are different. They are different. That's, that's your service director's policy. That, that, that makes me go home and say, like, okay, we had this big issue. I'm not going to sweat about it. Sewer count, I'm sweating. The water count, I'm obviously not sweating, but I want to get, so I'm not sweating faster.
Yeah. And you want, maybe you're going to need to use more water, then that's more expensive.
You want the account built up quicker, because if there's an incident, God forbid, in the next three years.
Yep. Plus, on the sewer side, I have two huge improvements coming. I've got two pump stations. I've got a 3.1 million and a $2 million. That's $5 million out of this account. We're probably going to do OWDA loans to help us with those. But anything unforeseen is a little scary to me when the account is a little low. So, that's why, that's why I would more advocate for the three.
Do the, do the, do the pumping stations, or to go back to the water, like the west, the tank out west, do any of those service properties outside of the city?
So, yes, so you would have a good, a good example at a Sylvania King, the Sylvan Lake subdivision. They're actually a Toledo, like, customer, so to speak. They're actually city residents, but they don't get their bills from us. The, the west tank would obviously be some, some mechanism of feed towards that.
So, those people would participate in repainting and all that stuff, or?
Great. So, it would just be on our, on our paying customers. That's what this would be towards, right? We, Mr. Mr. Aller, the previous service director, when he was here for 12 years, he tried hand over fist to get that area switched over to be our, and it just, he tried, and the San Edge wasn't, wasn't a willing partner with it. I don't know why, but we never made any ground with it.
But, Mr. Richardson, to your question, we do have customers, a material number of customers on the water and the sewer side that are outside the city limits.
Sure.
And they, they pay a premium relative to what the, the people inside the city pay. I think it's twenty-five percent, Mr. Shaw?
And that will be applied accordingly as well to this percentage?
Yeah, so this establishes the in-rate city thing, and then you would do the twenty-five percent for your ones outside the city, correct? That's been longstanding tradition here in the city that goes many, this goes at least three service directors back, so.
Mr. Shaw, I don't know for other council members, but certainly this isn't a surprise to me. I feel like you have been trying to keep us informed, and I feel like Mr. Aller also kept us informed that there would be a need for us to have a careful review and analysis of this. So, I thank you for your hard work and putting this analysis together. I think it's very helpful. I, what I heard you say is you're not looking for any formal action tonight, but you are leaning toward an interest in whether we're interested in the three-year versus the five-year?
Yeah, long-term. It obviously isn't critical to the 26 budget, but I certainly want feedback for that. If I need to look at something different, at least I know how this council body wants to move, moving forward.
Well, I would just share that I feel comfortable moving forward with a three-year plan, especially in light of the conversation you shared with us about the, the additional costs that we'll be incurring over the next five-year period.
Thank you.
Our fellow committee members are.
Yeah, good.
This is Westfall. I am as well. I think you've provided enough information, you know, for us to make that decision.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I think I'd be, I think the three-year makes more sense. And I I think about consumer budgeting standpoint, I honestly think it's going to be a little more stable once you get past that three years for them to know what to spend.
It will, it will, I agree with that.
Yeah, I, uh, I agree. How did we get here? I mean, were we, I mean, I'm feeling guilty, I wasn't paying attention, I realized you were in this shortfall.
You know, if I could rewind the clock and go back four years and see what the county, for me, the driver's been the debt service at the plant. I think there should have been a little more foresight on what that is. In 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 true perspective, I don't know that the information was being shared as it should have been from the county level to us on when these note payments and when these OPWC loan payments on their end, we're going to start to hit us for debt. I think this year, at least in my conversations with the San Edge, I don't think that's going to happen again. I'm I'm asking for satellite community meetings to be more quarterly, like when we get these invoices, I want to know what debt's coming our way. Um, I think maybe we fell a little bit behind. If you're going to point to something, I would say that we should have been doing this earlier than we have. So to your point.
Any other, any other questions from the committee members or any other members of council? Thank you, Joe, appreciate the information. Any other business to come before the committee tonight? Right here, a motion to adjourn the committee meeting. I don't think you're a committee member.
I'll second.
Motion by, my query is second by Brad.
My practice is to go to whatever meeting is on.
All who are in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, all, this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-seven.
He's the second second.
Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this, uh, meeting for Sylvanian City Council to order for the November the third, two thousand twenty-five. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Hanam? Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Dow?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
Seven members of council are in attendance, therefore a quorum does exist. We'll, uh, move on to the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, led by Mr. Hanam.
I pledge allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to additions for the agenda, I don't have anything, uh, to add to the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda, Mrs. Westfall?
Nothing, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Members of council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hanam?
Uh, I'd like to add thirteen A. The planning commission's recommendation that we give them additional, we adopt some additional guidance regarding, ground-mounted solar arrays.
So you think of thirteen A?
Yeah.
That works. Any other additions from members of council? Hearing none, Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Chris Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shaw?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schreier?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
No other changes, uh, do I have a motion to approve the council agenda as amended?
I move.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the council agenda as amended. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, thank you very much. Moving on to the meeting minutes from the minute, minutes from October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. There was, uh, originally in the packet and then there was a small correction made, uh, late last week. It was also sent out to you. So according to the law director, this is, these are non-amended meeting minutes because of that. They were, uh, sent to everybody in advance. So hearing that, we have the meeting minutes for the council meeting of October twenty, two thousand twenty-five, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move a passage of the, uh, I move approval of the meeting minutes for the October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of Sylvanian City Council as submitted.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes for the council meeting of October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry, thank you very much, and the minutes are approved. Moving on to agenda item number five, a report from the Utility and Environment Committee for the meeting that was held just a few minutes ago. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a Utilities and Environment Committee meeting at seven PM tonight. Uh, I served as chair of that committee, also in attendance were committee members, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Richardson, and Mrs. Westfall. In addition, we had council members, Mr. McCann and Mr. Hanam, along with Mayor Frye, Ms. Brining, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Shaw, Chief Miller, and Mr. Sanford. Uh, Mr. Shaw presented, um, a few different scenarios for us to consider, uh, and also described the background being that our water comes from the city of Toledo. And by twenty-twenty-six, all satellite commu- communities will pay the same rate. Uh, he also mentioned there was a twelve percent increase in Lucas County versus a two to four percent in other communities. Uh, there was some discussion around the costs and the reason needed for rate increases, uh, both on water and sewer. Uh, he also described, uh, some specifics on the repairs needed, uh, full replacements needed, including Sylvanian Avenue pump, which is three million dollars in itself. Uh, there is a proposed rate increase for water in twenty-twenty-six of seventy cents per one thousand gallons, which will be discussed later in our finance, uh, budget review agenda item. There's also a proposed rate increase on sewer for a dollar eleven per one thousand gallons in twenty-twenty-six. Uh, Mr. Shaw then explained the desire to increase our reserve. Would like to be five hundred thousand above reserve by twenty-thirty on both water and sewer. And our current projections on water allows it to happen in five years. Uh, would not, it would not happen in five years on sewer. There was some additional discussion on whether we should move forward with a three-year or a five-year proposed rate increase on sewer. There was some discussion, uh, Mr. Murphy asked about what it, what's entailed in pump replacement. Mrs. Westfall asked about calculations per one thousand gallons. And Mr. Richardson asked, you know, whether accounts can be combined along with, uh, the water rates, um, being pursued outside of our jurisdiction. Um, the committee members expressed alignment to move forward with a three-year rate increase on sewer and maintained the five-year proposal on water. There was a motion to adjourn the committee meeting by Mrs. Westfall, seconded by Mr. Richardson, and we adjourned at seven twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Any questions, uh, or comments from members of council? Appreciate it, thank you very much. No, uh, nothing to come before you at this point in regards to this, although we probably will have something coming before you here shortly at the next council meeting in regards to consideration for those potential rate increases. Moving on to the two thousand twenty-six budget, I, agenda item six A, we've got the expenditures for the potentially, uh, for ordinance one seventeen, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Mr. Schreier and administrative staff spent a lot of time putting this together as they always do. And I'll let Mr. Schreier do some brief explanations in regards to that.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, what you have before you is the ordinance for the two thousand twenty-six, um, budget. Uh, what administration's requesting tonight is a first reading. Um, other than some decrease in expenditures, uh, in the court after meeting with the judge, uh, the budget is exactly as we discussed in a previous finance committee meeting. Um, and I'm open to any questions if you have any, but again, we're just requesting first reading tonight.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Murphy, could you just walk through some of the conversations you had with the court?
Yeah, they they're, there's one main area that they're able to to save some money, to cut some expenses, is in the, uh, monitoring. Um, and it's a different process that they said they're going to start implementing even toward the rest of this year. Um, we've been spending about twenty thousand a month on electronic monitoring. Um, and they they think they can get it down to about thirty thousand a year. So that's where the big cuts came.
Other questions for Mr. Schreier? Hearing none, we have ordinance one seventeen and and as our, as Mr. Schreier mentioned, administration's asking just for the first reading, that's traditionally what we've done. Sometimes we pass it in two readings, sometimes we pass it in threes, you all recall. But, um, fundamentally, this is just the first reading for the consideration of the budget. So, uh, this is Westfall.
Mr. Mayor, before we go-
Mr. Hanam?
I just, we didn't really say this on the record. This this is, there's been a lot of work in this budget. We had a, we had a very, uh, spirited, uh, finance committee meeting in which we reviewed this with you and, uh, all members of council participated. And, uh, obviously that meeting was open to the public, although we didn't have, uh, I don't know that we had any, any, uh, outside folks there other than administration and council people. But, um, this sounds like it's going, like it's just going through, but there's been a lot of work on this already. Um, and the main purpose of this is to make sure that members of our community have the documentation in front of them in advance. And if they have questions, we want to hear the questions. That's why you'll see, you see us do everything by emergency, emergency measure. We don't like doing the budget that way because we want to give people an opportunity who want to dig in, to dig in and ask what they want to ask. And, uh, so-
Well said.
Sorry for grandstanding.
Well said, Mr. Han. Any other comments or questions from members of council? First reading, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce a first reading for ordinance number one seventeen dash two thousand twenty-five, and I'll read by title only to make appropriations for current expenditures and other expenditures of the city of Sylvanian, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Thank you, appreciate that. Two weeks hence, we'll have another, the second reading and perhaps passage at that point. So, um, as Mr. Hanam indicated, if you have questions or concerns, uh, please let us know, email us, and, uh, reach out to members of council or my s- my office or or, uh, Mr. Schreier or wherever, just to let us know what your thoughts and concerns may or may not be. Appreciate it. Moving on to agenda item number seven, we have, uh, Plumber Pool Bath House renovations, a final change order, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in front of you tonight is our final change order on the, uh, Plumber Pool Bath House renovations project. Um, we did get a really good bid, uh, to start the project off. We we were somewhere in the fours, low fours, I think, from what our engineer's estimate was. Uh, Van Tassel had a bid of three hundred ninety-four thousand, which was great to get us started right off the bat. Um, we did have, uh, two other project change orders, this being the last one here to address a flooring issue that had happened or became aware of it shortly after, um, the pool season opened on Memorial Day. Uh, the architectural specifications for the floor, uh, specified a certain, uh, grit type that would be ADA compliant, uh, no, that was fully skid resistant. As a matter of fact, when you put a wet foot on it, it was pretty slippery. Uh, none of us felt very comfortable with that flooring system that was specified and installed. Uh, so we did some temporary measures, we put some rubber matting down inside the bath house to get us through the season without doing, uh, substantial changes to it. But that gave us the summer to do some homework and find a a better flooring option, which is what we did come up with. Uh, we ended up putting in a new, um, slippery, uh, slip-resistant type floor. Um, we went and tested it out a couple of weeks ago. It is, it is great, it's exactly probably what we should have had from the front. Um, not that the architect really did anything poorly, uh, he did what was kind of specified in the code form, but, uh, certainly wasn't going to work for for what we had going on over there. So, uh, Van Tassel came up with a a product to put on for sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars to basically take off what was there. We also had some, uh, flooring issues, we did a lot of cutting of that floor. Um, if you had seen it, you know, probably in January, it looked like Swiss cheese with some plumbing changes and some different things we were doing. But where that concrete was placed and with the existing concrete, we were seeing some pops, some bubbling in those joints, uh, just from the curing process. So the flooring actually had some pops that was going in it too. So this got rid of all of that stuff, took care of that issue as well as took took care of the slid, uh, slippery, uh, issue that was there. So this change order is our last one, it's for sixteen thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars to increase the contract from four seventeen, six oh four and eight cents to four hundred thirty-four thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollars and eight cents. If you're doing the math, that's about a ten percent increase over the bid. Um, I did the paperwork with Sage Art, so if you guys recall how this project was funding, we had three hundred thousand dollars in state capital grants that we used to help pay for it. in state capital grants that we used to help pay for it. The balance of that was gonna be split fifty-fifty between Sage Art and the city. Uh, once we ran through all the math and all the numbers, uh the agreement that we originally had in place, the whole project came in less for each agency, about seventy-five hundred bucks to about ten thousand dollars, somewhere in that range. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but overall, a successful project that came in under budget despite uh what our change orders here uh would tell you, so. Uh, be happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. Westfall.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Shaw, are you saying that even with the sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars, it came in under budget?
It did, yeah. So each agency probably spent around seventy-five hundred dollars less than we were anticipating in our agreement.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And I'd just add to that, um I don't recall whether all members of council were at the ribbon cutting or had the opportunity over the summer to look at the bath house, but if you haven't uh and compared it against what was there years prior, it's been a pretty substantial upgrade, so it's, I think it's money well spent.
There's a great plaque on the left side of the building as you walk in. If you haven't seen it, it went up somewhere in July, right around July fourth. It's got all of your names on it. It's a really nice bronze plaque. Go check it out. It's very cool. But every project that's been substantial at the bath house has had something to commemorate it, so if you have some time, go check it out.
Any other questions from members of council?
I just have one.
Mr. Murphy.
Just out of curiosity, that coating on the floor, that surface, what's the shelf life on that? Did they give you any kind of, how long will that last before it has to be? Yeah, it's, it's real, um, it's nice. I think it's gonna tear the mops up probably more than it will the floor, maybe because it's a, it's a little aggressive, but we wanted to make sure people weren't uh slipping on it. Fifteen years is what they had mentioned on the coating, so it should be, should be great for quite some time.
Mr. Hanson.
Mr. Shaw, just kind of a similar question. You tested it, but the public hasn't tested it yet, correct?
Uh, we did uh the the old uh wet foot test, which is what we did when uh when we know we had the issue. Um, so we we got it all completely wet and went barefoot and tested it out, and it did exactly what we were asking it to do. So not open to the public, but certainly at our testing.
Well, and I guess the reason I'm asking, so they won't get to walk on it until May, Memorial Day?
Sure.
Is there any recourse to say, hey, eight months ago, you installed this product and it's not working as intended, you know?
We, we do have a one-year maintenance bond, so once the contract is completed, the clock ticks a year. If anything shows up, in addition, we can always work with them on uh getting the maintenance bond called in for that. Doesn't happen too often, but occasionally does, so.
I'm curious, Mr. Shaw, did you uh wear your swim trunks and uh and utilize the facility as well?
That was Mr. Mc- um, Mr. McMahon, sorry. He was the one that did the wet stuff, so I kept my shoes on.
I appreciate that. Any other questions for Mr. Shaw? Hearing none, we have ordinance number one eighteen two thousand twenty-five for consideration, Mr. Stell.
I'd like to introduce ordinance number one eighteen dash twenty twenty-five and read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to approve change order number three, final, to the city's agreement with Van Tassel Construction Corporation for the Plumber Pool Bath House renovations project. For additional work items required, increasing the contract amount by sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars. I move for passage of ordinance number one eighteen dash twenty twenty-five as an emergency measure.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one eighteen two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Ordinance one eighteen two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number eight, we have uh ordinance with the the Board of County Commissioners, ordinance one nineteen, Ms. Brining.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, for the past almost twenty years, we've been contracting with Lucas County to handle um after-hours canine services for us. Um, they're, they're proposing another three-year agreement and no recommendation or no increase in the cost, so we would recommend its approval. The chief routinely works with them whenever there's a dog running loose in the city after hours and has had great success working with them.
Any questions for Ms. Brining regarding this matter? Hearing none, we have ordinance one nineteen two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number one nineteen dash twenty twenty-five. Sorry. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of Lucas County, Ohio for after-hours canine control services by acting dor- dog warden of Lucas County, Ohio. I move for passage of ordinance number one nineteen dash twenty twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one nineteen two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. An ordinance one nineteen two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number nine, we have the oh, Little Road um CRA for consideration, ordinance one twenty two thousand twenty-five, Ms. Brining.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this would, I'm just asking for referral to the finance committee so that we can have additional discussion about it. Um, this is one where the a de- developer is proposing um to put uh warehouse-type thing that was approved by city council uh on the Centennial Road. Um, and as part of that process, he requested that a CRA be established. Mr. Sanford and I met with the treasurer of the schools. This would be a new, under the new CRA rules. Um, so there is a requirement to make the schools whole, so they would not be losing any tax revenue. Mr. Cook, they didn't have any objection to the creation of it, but um it's been a while since we've talked about CRA, so I thought it would be helpful um to just refer it to the finance committee and we can talk about the boundaries and the terms in more detail there. If that makes sense.
Any questions for Ms. Brining?
I think referral makes sense.
Yes, it does make sense.
Hearing uh, hearing no questions uh for potential referral to the finance committee, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move referral of ordinance number one twenty dash two thousand twenty-one, the Little Centennial Community Reinvestment Area to Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion and a second to uh refer the ordinance one twenty two thousand twenty-five for the finance committee for further information and consideration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Mrs. Westfall, would you like to set the meeting now, or would you like to consider and talk to finance committee members?
I, if possible, I'd like to set that committee meeting now, and um I think it would work to meet potentially November seventeenth before our city council meeting next. Um, I think it's a little complicated, maybe forty-five minutes. What do you think?
Yeah, I think that's probably.
Um, so six forty-five, I don't see another meeting on the schedule for that time. Does that work for our finance committee members?
At six forty-five?
Thought we were due seven thirty, damn.
Oh, sure.
I've really worked hard to not get seven thirty, damn. So does that work for our finance committee members? So I'd like to make a motion that the finance committee meet on Monday, November seventeenth at six forty-five P M to discuss uh ordinance number one twenty dash two thousand twenty-five and meet here in the council chambers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set a finance committee meeting for Monday, November seventeenth at six forty-five P M here in council chambers uh for consideration of ordinance one twenty two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much, and uh the clerk will publish that uh notification. Thank you very much, Mrs. Westfall. Uh, moving on to agenda item number ten, we have the downtown transportation improvements for our underground burial for our friends at Toledo Edison. Mr. Shaw.
That's exactly right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our friends at Toledo Edison, this is our hopefully last stop uh at city council with respect to our aerial bury effort. We were here in September at our middle meeting uh with a subordination agreement, which uh was was passed, as well as three easements that were needed uh to do the project on city-owned property, which those were all um granted as well, and we're in the process of recording those easements. Final step is the cost that Toledo Edison uh will need to do their portion of the the bury work. This is the biggest one that uh was planned for, what we were thinking it was gonna be uh and what we had budgeted for, so they have uh their billing proposal included, uh which is in the amount of four hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. Just as a quick reminder, this is their cost to do their work, so we'll go through with our utility bury project. We'll put the infrastructure in the ground. We'll get everything set, ready to go, and then from them to do their costs, to put those facilities underground and do their work, that's the cost that's in front of you uh tonight for approval, so be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Shaw regarding this uh matter? One question I did have for you. They understand there is a time horizon that they need to be meeting here, correct?
Yes, they do. Um, so the goal is, is the um utility bury project itself was scheduled to have a bid opening Wednesday this week, so we were anticipating that. Fortunately, we've had a couple of questions come in that's extending that bid to next Wednesday, so I'll know what that final amount is. But we would move right to construction right away, hopefully start uh somewhere in December, January, and then we would have about six months or so uh to get a lot of that major work done and then have these utility companies start to transfer one each down from the poles and into their into their stuff, so. A lot of, a lot of stuff has to go into play. I'm working with four utility companies, even working with one sometimes as a chore, so um uh we we just cross our fingers and hope everything goes well, but you know, we've been diligently working on this for a year, so I think we're, we're in good shape.
Who's up first?
Uh, really any of them. This is kind of unique. Usually when you move aerial facilities, you go from the top down. So you would move the poles out, and then Toledo Edison would move, and then your communications would move. Uh, this is different. The infrastructure's gonna be there, and they're in separate areas of the of the street too, so as soon as someone you say go, you know, ca- you know, communication facilities could move, and then Edison could be next, or it doesn't matter, so this'll be interesting to see how it all kind of comes together.
Questions, other questions for Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Ms. Stell.
I'm just curious, has there been any communication with the utilities about informing residents who'd be impacted? Uh, assuming at some point there'll have to be a shut-off during the transition?
Yeah, actually, i- it, on the communication side, it should be pretty easy. Um, obviously, on the electricity side, we'll have a lot of early communication, especially with residents uh going from an aerial feed that ties into a weatherhead on someone's house to doing something different. It's gonna be pretty, pretty substantial, so there'll be a lot of communication by my office with the individual uh residents as we go and on how all that comes together.
Thank you.
Someone else had a question?
Other questions for Mr. Shaw? Hearing none, we have ordinance one twenty-five, one twenty-one two thousand twenty-five for consideration. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number one twenty-one dash twenty twenty-five. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to approve and accept the proposal of Toledo Edison to relocate aerial facilities relative to the downtown transportation improvement project appropriating four hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventeen cents, therefore. I move for passage of ordinance number one twenty-one dash twenty twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one twenty-one two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried and one, uh ordinance one twenty-one two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number eleven, we have uh service director's request for uh permission to advertise for the Rapid Beacon uh system for our uh our partners, the Sylvania Schools. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is our permission to advertise request. Um, this project is in our twenty-six budget. Um, but what we wanted to do was get this out uh in front a little bit early so that we had the ability, should the budget pass uh timely here either in November or early December, we might have the opportunity to put this project on the street yet this year, see if we can get a competitive bid before Christmas and then award it in January on the twenty-sixth Monday, so it's a little unusual for me to come this early, but the way that the schedule kind of works out, I think we can get a really competitive bid. Um, if we're able to accomplish this after the budget passes. We wouldn't do anything until the budget passes, but once it does, the permission to advertise allows us to move forward fairly quickly and get the project on the street ready for bid. So just a reminder, this replaces our rectangular rapid flash beacons. You push the buttons at McCord or at Highland, and it's got the strobe lights. Um, we've had a lot of compliance issues on those. We reached out to ODOT for some safety funding and got ninety percent of this project paid for, so um some of the costs that you can see assigned to this is very, very good. Um, it's, it's great when we can get safety monies applied to these, but you know, for seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of improvements, um to have the state cover six hundred and fifty-seven thousand of it is fantastic, so a win-win for us, a win for our schools, a win for our kids, to try to get them uh safer mechanisms to cross uh busy streets and get them, get them into their school safely, sa- safely, so. Again, this is just the permission to advertise. We wouldn't move forward until the budget passes, so that's the request.
And Mr. Shaw, your impression is that they, contractors, potential contractors, bidders would want to start off this with a strong beginning of the year, thus the reason why they would be more aggressive potentially on their price offers.
No, November and December are eerily great for bidding projects. Uh, they love to have projects on the books to come out and say, we've got work uh already in the hopper, so I love advertising projects in October, November, December. It's a great time to do it.
The question for Mr. Murphy.
You mentioned compliance issues with the current systems there. Can you just kind of walk briefly through how this fixes some of the compliance issues? I'm assuming you mean drivers not complying, right? Yeah, the, the rectangular rapid flash beacons don't carry authority with them in the code. They're, they're enhanced crosswalk uh things to help you get from point A to point B, but they don't stop traffic. They're not meant to. It's meant to bring your awareness to somebody who is crossing. The systems that are gonna go in is what's at Saint Joe's and what's on Harun Road for the Sylvania River Trail. You push a button and you're physically stopping traffic, so it is, it carries all the weight and authority as a traffic signal does. That's the difference. What we've seen is a lot of indecisions, like you're not paying attention. You push the button and it's strobing, and you're, you're looking to see if someone's there, but you're not slowing down fast enough. Where the kids, I mean, I've go down McCord every morning, and the, where the kids push the button, they stand there talking, so they like, I guess they're not going, then, yeah. Lot of indecision, so this, this, these devices clarify that. Truth, the the R F Bs, they work better in lower um speed zones, like I'm gonna say twenty-five, thirty miles per hour. Two lanes, you get a little better uh compliance with them. On McCord Road, Erie and Sylvania Avenue, they're not, they're not the best devices to get compliance for walkers like that. These will, these will do it, so that's why we're moving towards these.
Questions for Mr. Shaw, yeah? And uh we have the permission to advertise for consideration, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to authorize the administration to advertise for bids for the Despian Hybrid Beacon Project.
Second.
Motion and a second to uh authorize the administration to advertise for the Hybrid Beacon Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to the second page of our agenda for this evening, we have the uh ordinance one twenty-two for consideration, the then-and-now certifications. Mr. Schreier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, these are the then-and-now certifications uh for October, and the amount of just over the amount of just over thirty-nine thousand, and administration asked for your approval.
Any questions for Mr. Schreier regarding the then-and-now certifications? Hearing none, we have ordinance one twenty-two for consideration. Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number one twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-five, and I'll read by title only. An ordinance to authorize and ratify the execution of then-and-now certificates by the finance director and payment of amounts due for various purchase orders. I move passage of one, ordinance one twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance one twenty-two two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. She carried. Thank you very much. An ordinance one twenty-two two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number thirteen, we have proposal ordinance one fifteen two thousand twenty-five for the special use permit uh for the potential installation of ground-mounted solar array system. Um, so uh we had a meeting two weeks ago, three weeks ago? Yeah, public hearing on that. I know many of you had a chance to go out and view this. Did you have any comments or questions?
I do have a few comments, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hanson.
This wa- this one was a very difficult decision for me. Um, I visited the Millard's property along with Mr. Hanum and and s- some other members visited on, at separate times as well. And I looked at it, and I think I even said to them, this is as, much more secluded than I thought it would be. Um, and then I visited uh the property to the north of them with Mrs. Westfall where they have a deck that sits about eight feet above ground, and it's likely that they could see the top of the solar panels over the fence. They have a balcony with some chairs on the second floor, which most likely they would see the solar panels. And I looked at that and thought, you know, maybe this isn't as secluded as I thought. So I, again, it's just very challenging for me. Um, we did, you know, after some additional discussions and and research, it looks like this is probably the best case scenario. It looks like this is probably the best case scenario, um, best placement of these solar panels. Um, you know, it's one of those situations where not everybody's going to be happy, but I, I think this is probably. Um. The right location for it. Uh, they do have trees that will screen it. The trees will continue to grow over time, whi- which will again give some additional protection. Um, for the neighbors that they may visually see that. Uh, but it also brought to my attention, I think we need to do some additional work on. Setting some long-term guidelines on this, so I, I was happy to hear Mr. Hanum add that as an agenda item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. Any other comments before?
I do, um, we just. Just follow up on Mr. Hanson's comments. I too looked at, most council members looked at the Mill Irons. Um, and then in addition to the Mill Irons, I did join Mr. Hanson at the um. The house just north of them.
Yeah.
Yes, and what I would share with you is that both families are good families who want the right things for our community. They both have done beautiful things with their property. We should be proud to have such wonderful community partners. Uh, we know that this is a very tough decision for us as council members. Because one member of these two. Good community citizens will not be as happy as the other, but I do feel like um. The case was definitely made for uh, having a good location and uh, the right space. And the Mill Iron's property and the fact that the uh, planning commission also supported this does weigh, you know, quite significantly. And, and my decision at least, so I think we're ready to move forward and.
Great.
Take action.
Mr. Hanum, uh, unless there's any other comments?
The only thing I wanted to mention was that when they presented, they did say the fence was taller than the solar panels, but that's not actually. Accurate from a visual standpoint. Um, you can still see it, you know, through the fence of this much. Um, but as you mentioned, the trees um, in another, I'm, I'm not the tree guy, but. Do, does look with that plan as if it will grow and cover that space up, but I do think that's something we should be considering that. Fact that this is a special use permit, that, that commitment should have to be followed through at some point as well too. You know, should, should in the future you see that, that plan doesn't follow through, that, that should be considered as well too. The natural barriers not there any longer.
Right. I'd like to dovetail off Mr. Murphy's comments that uh, I believe in cases like this, we are, it's important for us to take. Further individual review of these things. Having it be a special use permit. I think is very important to the subject and moving forward. I appreciate Mr. Hanum's. Uh, future consideration on this to give guidance to the planning commission for such matters.
Thank you.
Well, I, I mean, I'll just say this, I think uh. Yeah. I wouldn't approve a special use permit for a solar array in my backyard. This is a, you, this, this particular parcel is. I, I mean, it's unique in, within the city. It is not uh, and the only reason I'm comfortable with it is because of the. Of the conditions at this particular location and uh. The uh. And that's why I'm comfortable going forward with it. I'm, I'll, I'll be, we, we can, we're gonna talk about it here in a minute, but I'm, I'm a little. I'm, I'm not sure is it, I want, want to establish guidelines for these, but we'll talk about that. Anyway, I'm ready to move forward.
To, I, I'd like to add to that if I may, is what I liked at the uh. We were concluding our discussion when we were, when I was on site, was that this is a recyclable. Array. That means that the next homeowner, if they don't want this array in their backyard, they just simply call the number. And it's taken out. There's already, it's already bonded to do that. That the ability for the homeowner has the control moving forward to be able to take this away from their property. So at no cost to the homeowner. So I think that also was an important factor here.
I wish we had that agreement on cell phone towers.
That's what I mentioned when we were talking about it.
That's a sore subject, Mr. Hanum, but we'll, we'll, we'll consider ordinance one fifteen for two thousand twenty-five. If, if you would care, care to start this process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move adoption of ordinance number one fifteen uh, twenty-eight dash two thousand twenty-five. I'll read by title only granting a special. Use permit to permit the installation of a ground mounted solar energy system. Slovenia, Ohio, and the application of Benjamin and Amanda Mill Iron, fi- fifty-nine sixteen Main Street, Slovenia, Ohio. On the recommendation of the planning commission, and I move adoption of ordinance number one fifteen, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Second, a motion and a second to approve ordinance one fifteen, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried and ordinance one fifteen, two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item thirteen A, which was added to our agenda discussion regarding planning guidance, Mr. Hanum?
Yeah, I noticed the planning commission in approving this, it uh, recommended that. Uh, and Miss, Miss Westfall brought this to my attention as well, that the planning commission recommended that. We consider, council consider additional um. Guidance or regulation relating to the use of above-ground solar panels, ground mounted. Above-ground solar panels and um. Uh, the law director, uh, Ms. Penning has, then, has provided us with some sample uh, ordinances regarding. What other communities have done. Um. I have, I have a uh. I don't come to this with a clean slate. I feel very comfortable with the. Use of the special use process um, in reviewing these. That may uh. Depending on how many of these we have, that may become more of a burden on council, but uh. I think that's a burden we, we ought to seriously embrace and take on. Um. Cause I think in general, uh, ground mounted solar arrays are not appropriate in urban. Communities and while we are suburban community, we're still a city. Um. And uh, I understand that there's uh, some interest in maybe coordinating this with town. Township, and maybe you can talk about that in a minute.
Yep.
Right. There's a lot of, there's a big difference between Slovenia Township and the city of Slovenia in terms of the array of. Uh, housing uh, arrangements, the size of lots, the. There's just, there's some different things there. I'm not opposed to coordinating. But I'm pretty skeptical that I'm gonna want to spell out in advance the circumstances under which, the limited circumstances under which. I think it would be appropriate to have a ground mounted solar array in uh, in the city of Slovenia. Those are, so, but I'm perfectly willing to have a committee meeting to get more input on that and to give everyone an opportunity to. Look at what the other communities have done and uh, and listen to anybody's ideas about this. But I do come, come, I come at it with a pre- predisposition.
So the reason, cause I, uh, Mr. Hanum, as you know, I'm the one that made the motion for this and the reason that I did so was uh, multifaceted. I'm sure you're all shocked by that. Um. The reason, the initial reason is I, it, but it, as I considered it, there were other things that I think we may want to think through. Uh, and, and it may not be a council consideration, at least initially. The, the first is. Uh, there's been lots of information out there in the, in the public about the cost of electricity rising for various reasons, not the least of which is this. Um, potential for large data center loads coming in. So uh, one of the reasons I want to bring this up is that the, the planning commission struggled with making this decision. Uh, a- and I expect that we're probably going to see more of these applications even for. Um, places where they technically aren't eligible based on our current zoning code. So I wanted to. The reason I wanted to bring it up is that council has not looked at this in some years. Since for fifteen years, basically, and I wanted to make sure that you all, if you're still comfortable with this approach. Goodbye me, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, and I, and the administration is fine with that. We just wanted to bring it back. Through because if we start seeing more of these, is this the way that you want to continue to approach it or not? That's the first one. The second one is, we did ha- I did have some conversations with the township. They reached out to me in regards to coordinating. Roof mounted solar arrays and the possibility in the viewpoint of, okay, where should we allow? Solar panels to go on somebody's roof, uh, and should we allow them to go onto the front of the house where it has more of a visual impact? And the third one, and a- a- and these last two, we can handle at least initially administratively, but I wanted to bring them to your attention. The third one is. With every single one of these solar arrays and the advent of, of uh, electric vehicles, as you know, Mr. Hanum, one of the things that's gonna happen. Is that people are gonna start installing uh, power panels or basically large battery systems in their garages. Which is also part of this process because you produce more when the sun's shining, obviously you need to store it so that you can charge your vehicle up. And I pointed at Mr. Hanum because he has an electric vehicle, so he understands exactly what I'm. A big one, yes, exactly. So uh, if, I'm perfectly fine in having the administration take first crack at working with the township. And bringing back some uh, various proposals, but I didn't want to do that without giving you all the opportunity to. Uh, provide input or thoughts or ideas. We're happy to take that, take that role and responsibility on that's. That is the administration's role and responsibility, but I also wanted to involve council if they wanted to be so. That was the thought process. Um, so I'm, whichever way you all want to go in regards to, if you want to keep the SGP process. That's fine by me, but.
Well, I'm inclined to do, I said, uh, that's my inclination. I'm certainly open to other, other thoughts about. I guess the issue uh. Have some additional coordination to do with township is now the time to move forward with. Uh. Uh, zoning committee meeting to discuss this, or should we hold off until we have a little more? Maybe some more guidance from the administration?
Yeah, I think that would make sense, Mr. Hanum, and, and I, I don't see this being an instantaneous thing. I mean, we're going into winter. Um, chances are nobody's probably gonna file a, for a special use permit to put solar array up in the, in the middle of January. Um, although I'm sure we could get a good price on that, right, Mr. Shaw?
Yes, sir.
So there we go. Um, so i- if, uh, if you could give administration a few months to, to sort through that and, and we may come back around in the spring. And have additional conversations and make a recommendation to have a, have a conversation, more broad-based br- conversation about that.
That's great. We'll wait to hear from you.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns for members of council?
The only thing I was gonna add is I think that um, the solar panel situation is more than just an energy thing. It's, it's, it really is a uh. Becoming much more of a cultural thing too. So, and I mean that, that. It's not just the younger generation, but just like, as time goes on, more in the population are starting to see that as less of. An offset of an eyesore, quote unquote, with the positive aspects of it, so I do think that it's going to become more and more important. That we have a long term, not just because it's gonna be much more important to. More people in the community, just in general. Um, you know, we, we might come to it with a predisposition of, you know, we grew up with. Solar pa- panels first came into the market and I was like, God, these are ugly and cumbersome and nasty looking. Don't quote me on my terminology, but, but the point is that now people don't see it that way. They're not the same. They are more efficient. They are. Recyclable, reusable. There's so many more aspects to it that people look at it a lot differently now. I think so it probably is advantageous to educate ourselves. On what, what they are these days, so.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the technology on this is. Uh, developing rapidly. There's a lot of changes, I, I, you know, that the Mill Iron solar array is a whole brand new.
Leading edge.
Uh, leading, yeah, leading a piece of work and um. Yeah, there's a lot going on in this field and things are gonna continue to change and they'll get more efficient and better.
No doubt.
Yeah, and I, cause I was talking with uh. Ms. Westfall earlier this morning, I've looked at, I've looked at batteries for the garage, uh, and often.
Not shocked.
And other alternative uh, energy generating.
Sure.
So, anyway, I, I, I suppose this is timely.
Super. Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing now, we'll move on to agenda item fourteen. Um, for. Is that proposed resolution eighteen, two thousand twenty-five, Mr. Shaw?
Uh, in front of you is a resolution of intent request from the Ohio Public Works uh, Commission. Um, out of every twenty grant applications that we apply for with Ohio Public Works Commission funding. Uh, one or two of these, this is only the second one in my twelve years where we actually at the application. Uh, requested a partial grant, partial loan. Uh, and the rea- you may ask, why would we do that? Uh, it's for scoring, uh, this particular year, uh, this project was on the OPWC ASK. Uh, we also had Slovenia Interchange, which was our number one request for a million dollars, so we threw. A lot of our most important project points towards that and this one was the second one, so didn't score necessarily quite as well, but in order to boost it. If uh, you suggest to OPWC you're willing to take uh, some of the grant funding in form of a loan. Um, they give you more points to do that. They, they like that, so that, that was what happened on this particular project. So the numbers are there in front of you. The four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars uh, that we applied for in Ohio Public Works Commission Funding Assistance. Forty-seven uh, point five percent of that was in the grant uh, allocation. With the ma- remaining balance of fifty-two point five percent, two hundred forty-six thousand, eighty-five dollars in the form of a loan. So great, OPW says, okay, you want to do that, you can apply for it, great, uh, that's it. But before you ask for the money back, they ask for you to do this sidestep here. Which is the resolution of intent, basically saying, okay, you're going to borrow, we're gonna give you this money, this two hundred forty-six thousand, eighty-five dollars. But you're gonna pay it back. That's kind of what this resolution of intent says, is it puts us on the hook to pay it back, which is no problem. Uh, OPWC is great. It's one of, I think it's the only zero percent interest uh, funding mechanism that we have around here, so it is free money. Uh, over a longer term. Uh, sometimes the finance director and I will talk about if we actually wanna, you know, have that carry forward for the full ten years. Or we could pay it off. There's some, there's some ways you can do that, but nonetheless, this is just the intent. So before we can request any of the construction funding money on the Haroun Road Ravine Drive uh, improvements project out in front of Flower Hospital. Which is about eighty percent complete. We're in mop up mode on some of the construction activities. We gotta take this step in order to have some of those monies come back our way. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Shaw? Hearing now, we have resolution eighteen, two thousand twenty-five for consideration, Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is resolution number eighteen, two thousand and twenty-five. I'll read by title only. A resolution of the council of the city of Slovenia declaring its official intent and reasonable expectation of the city of Slovenia. On behalf of the state of Ohio, the borrower, to reimburse its capital improvement fund for the Haroun Road. Ravine Drive Intersection Improvements, CL two four A B, CL two five A B. With the proceeds of tax exempt debt of the state of Ohio, I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve uh, resolution eighteen, two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried and resolution eighteen, two thousand twenty-five is approved as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item number fifteen, we have uh, ref- potential referral for the municipal planning commission SGP four, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Hanum?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we refer uh. Application S U P dash four dash twenty twenty-five to the planning commission for its review and recommendation.
Second.
A motion and a second to uh, refer S U P four, two thousand twenty-five. For the mun- to the municipal planning commission for their consideration and recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, thank you very much. And that municipal planning commission meeting is next Wednesday, correct? Welcome to attend, those are Zoom meetings, so uh, you're always welcome to attend, attend those particular meetings. Um, moving on to agenda item number sixteen, we have Chief Miller's request. Uh, regarding the place since some uh, stuff that she found in the basement in a closet or two, uh, on gov deals.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'm back before you again. We've been doing some more house cleaning. Unfortunately, it seems in the past. Um, we've purchased things to replace items and other items were placed back into storage, cause we might need them and. Um, we're kind of bursting at the seams, so I've been going through trying to prioritize what is usable, what's not usable, what's. Um we're kind of bursting at the seams, so I've been going through trying to prioritize what is usable, what's not usable, what's. Um no longer viable for us. And just for example, the first is the bicycles. Um we just replaced them with e-bikes. We have no need to store six bicycles. It's taking up valuable space, so. Um that's why we're putting on there. The radios and equipment are no longer val- valued to anyone on our Lucas County. Emergency system. Those are obsolete for us. However, they are still available for parts, so we're finding a lot of people are starting to buy them. Um that they may be used elsewhere in the, in the county. So yes, that's, a lot of this is just what's been bought and or been replaced. And we have other items, we're no longer using these, and they should have some value to put on gov deals.
Questions for Chief Miller. Hearing none, we have a consideration for placing these ob- this obsolete equipment on gov deals, uh Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we authorize Chief Miller to place the items that were presented in her memo of November third, two thousand twenty-five. Uh items that are no longer viewed to the police department, placed on gov gov deals for auction.
Second, a motion in a second to authorize the administration to place uh various items uh for. Chief Miller's uh November third memo on gov deals for bidding um by the general public. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much. And those items will be placed on gov deals. And and Mr. Shaw, what account does that go into when we get money for those kinds of things? I'm curious. General fund, okay. Thank you very much. It comes to the end of our agenda. If we, are there any committee reports or committee referrals? Hearing none, uh do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried and we are adjourned until our next meeting, two weeks hence, on Monday, November seventeenth. Thank you very much, everybody.